The girls' guests are not reading. There's some heavy voices in here. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to have a moment of silence for the Oxford, Michigan students who were killed last Thursday, I believe, Wednesday or Thursday.
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, with this will liberty and justice for all.
A few announcements before we get started. The water and sewer restructuring. On behalf of the Village of Washingtonville, I want to thank everyone that was involved in Whoville and the 11th Annual Christmas Parade this past Saturday. Some say it was the 10th, some say it's the 11th. We have to wait till next year to see how the banners actually come out, but it was a tremendous success. I have a little essay here that was sent to me from Annabelle Floyd, an eighth grader who lives in Brooklyn, a visitor who looked forward to going to Whoville and a visitor of the Hudson Valley. I will read after the announcement. We'll start to read water meters once again on January 3rd. The reason we want to give residents enough time to pay their bills before it's re-levered to their taxes. Holiday shopping will -- Village will take place on Saturday, December 12th, from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM at Fulton Square, located at 6th Depot Street. For an update, we will be rerouting the sewer line down Woodfield Drive and connecting it on McLaughlin Weg. After that's complete, our DPW, weather permitting, will start cleaning out the stream behind all those homes. Again, our commitment to the residents of the village, we cannot stop the flooding, but we will do whatever we need to do to prevent water from going into your homes. Residents affected by Hurricane Ida and who have spoken to this office regarding the damage, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, also known as FEMA, last week awarded Orange County with an individual and household assistance disaster declaration. Today, I was in contact with FEMA representative to schedule where residents could come and meet with FEMA. I will have another conference call tomorrow with them. The Village of Washingtonville would be the host of residents from the Village of Washingtonville, Town of Blooming Grove, Villages South Blooming Grove and Town of Hamptonburg. I will make a post on Facebook as soon as we know the details. Breakfast with Santa this Sunday at Knights of Columbus, 18 Halle Drive, 7:00 AM to 12:30 PM. Our next meeting, regular meeting, is scheduled for December 21st, 2021, in which we'd like to hold a public hearing regarding what you're about to see tonight. Here's a letter from Abigail. One event -- it's a small essay. One adventure I would love to go to is the Hudson Valley. She's an eighth grade -- eight-year-old.
Eight-year-old or eighth grade?
Eight-year-old.
Oh, eight-year-old.
Out of Brooklyn, New York. It's a very marvelous place to go in the winter because it's cozy and you can see deer if you go into the woods. Another reason I want to go to the Hudson Valley is because it's nice, little place where there's not a lot of noise and it's like a vacation place where there are lots of fires, fireplaces. There's even a Whoville place where they act out and a person gets all dressed up as the Grinch and then asks at the end, "What about your -- what about you? Where do you want to spend vacation?" So, thank you, Abigail, for heading Whoville. She comes up, stays with a relative of your friend up here. So, Abigail will be up here next January, so hopefully she can come in and we can introduce ourselves to them. We have new business presentation of revised water sewer facility rates by Delaware Engineering. Tracy. For you, Wes.
Okay. Basically, we're going to talk about what we did the last time. I'm just going to go through it quickly and then get to the actual details of the revisions. And then the big part of it is implementation. How do you do that? Let's see if I can do this from here. Yes. Okay. And this is similar to what we would use for the public hearing. Again, this is why the Village is doing this. Water and sewer are currently calculated together for their rates, but they're two separate budgets. They're two separate facilities. And in order to meet your needs financially and maintenance and operation for each of these two separate systems, their budgets need to be kept separate. And especially things for capital costs and capital improvements are totally different. Different needs at different times need to be kept separate. Okay, we talked about this. I think you're aware of it, but we can bring this up at public hearing again is, you know, how rates are charged now. Sewer rates now. And then how the new rates will be structured. I think we can make this a little bit bigger. Wow, your mouse is quick. Okay, so we talked last time about billing the water use or the consumption, the rents, based on how much water is billed and what your water budget is. And then for sewer, how much water was billed and what your sewer budget is for operation and maintenance. And that's -- they're separate. They're both based on water consumption because you don't have separate meters for the sewer system. Basically, you've got water coming in and you've got mostly sewer coming out. I understand lawns and lawn mowing can use a lot of water in the summer, so you're still billing based on how much water is consumed. Again, you need to be setting up your budgets to cover -- they need to be comprehensive to include what your costs are going to be for operation and maintenance for the drinking water system and then separately for the sewer system. Going to keep the same system based on, you know, per 1,000 gallons and using the build rate for 20,000, you know, for 2020 to 2021 and how much water was billed and the operation budgets at that time, we came up with the use rent of $3.77 per kilogallon for water and $5.58 for sewer. The minimum at seven kilogallons still works, still makes sense based on the percentiles of usage that people are using. That's the, like, the 25th percentile of water use is that, about that seven kilogallons. So, that makes sense to keep it as a minimum. The next bit is really what -- and what we needed to update today was how to calculate a new facility cost for capital improvements. See if there's anything more useful here. I'm going to bring up the other page, but that's a little bit small here, too. All right. You do have this in your copy of the report and we're calling this the schedule, the schedule of units, and that's page -- what page have we got?
Five.
Sticky in my way. Yeah, sticky stuck. So, basically, capital improvement and debt charges need to be charged, especially for sewer, according to the benefit of the customer. So, for operation and maintenance, people are charged according to their water use, sewer use, rent based on the water use, and that's a consumption charge. You use more, you pay more. Debt costs and capital improvement costs are based on the benefit to the property, not necessarily how much you use, although it's related, but it's benefit. So, if you have a single-family home and you -- your family lives in that home, you get one unit and that's your base unit. We use something similar to this in several places. I've put this together based on what you've got here and we can talk about any questions and things that might need to be changed or revised. Benefit to a family is a living space. You're benefiting from water and sewer. That's the basics we're going to use. Commercials, some commercials benefit more from water and sewer, like restaurants and laundromats and car washes, and some commercials might benefit, but maybe not to the same extent. They're not making a profit off the fact that they have water. Trying to think of something like a small sales shop for clothes. You know, you might have a back sink. You may have a, you know, a bathroom for your employees. Maybe you let your customers use it. You're not cooking, using a lot of water to make food, using a lot of water for cleaning, and so there's a difference to benefit. So, what we try to do with this is look at how those rates and what that -- weights of use and what that benefit is. Single-family home, you're not making anything to sell usually. You're doing your living stuff. You get to a commercial situation where you're using water to make, you know, your food that you're selling. You make -- so, your benefit is more, you get more points. Basically, how you use this, and we have -- I have this whole spreadsheet up in Excel that we'll need to share with your folks that do the water charging and understand that there's a company that does the software for your billing. They're going to need to get this updated unit.
Okay.
Because I have each account. I've used the GIS system, geographic information, to take your -- the information I got from the Village accounts and the parcel number, and you cross-reference that with the parcels in the Village and you get the information about what's the property code, what's, you know, all this other stuff that you don't really need. But in order to use this, it's helpful to have -- keep track of the property codes. And the property codes are telling -- that's what the RPS, the Real Property System, and the tax assessor uses to say, "What's the use of this property?" And a 210s, that's listed on here in the middle columns, some of those numbers that are grouped together for benefits, you know, benefit value and use for putting a unit number, assigning a unit number to those. Residential, single-family home is 210, a home with an apartment is 215, two-family home is 220, and the points go up a little bit there because you've got two families benefiting. They get two points. You got three, you know, that coming up. Car washes further down, 434, 435, and 436. Those are different types of car washes. There's the self-wash. You go in with the spray thing and you do your own thing or the drive-throughs. These are right now, I've got them all set at four, so it's at least four times the benefit of a family, a single-family home. And as you look at some of the larger scores or units assigned here for large retail, those are things like the Walmarts and, you know, the larger retail stores that have clothes, sporting goods. They also have the kitchens where they -- there's food preparation, there's supermarket sales, there might be a hair salon, you know, they're large. There's a lot of benefit they got from being connected to water and sewer.
So, schools are?
Schools right now, and this is, you know, that's all open for discussion at the moment, based on the number of students. And that's kind of on the same idea of you got a single-family home. And really, a single-family home ranges quite widely. You know, you go from one person, maybe up to seven or eight, you know, on a single-family home, but that benefit to them is still the same. They're paying water rents for their consumption, so they use more. If you have a seven-person home, you use more water than a single person living in a home, so you pay more for consumption. But in terms of paying toward debt service, it's the same benefit. You're living. You're not using it to make money or something like that. So, the student idea and using that model that I discussed on the first part of the report with the Excel spreadsheets, what I can do is I can plug in different units for different accounts or different parcels and see how that winds up. How does that shift? It never shifts what your revenue is because you're basically saying, "If I've got all these units assigned to all my parcels, I add that up. I've got this many units at the end." You can shift it around by saying, "Okay, I want to do schools since you brought it up, one unit per 12 students." And I basically went online and looked at what was available in terms of the school and for the size and about, and that's going to change every year. You don't really need to be nitpicky about this. We tried to create something that you set it up and you do some basic maintenance. You don't need to be policing how many students are in school this semester. Yeah? So, you can play with that. If there's, I don't know, whatever number of students, divide that by 12, that's how many, you know, units they get.
So, then your end number will be the same all the time? It's just will change the?
It'll -- well, no. You know, if I raised this or lowered this, if I said one for every five students, the school's going to get more points. That makes the total sum go up. And then when you divide the budget by the total number of points, you get a smaller number because there's more units that you're dividing the same budget by. And so, you can play with that in Excel in this model. You can play with that a little bit and try to balance it back out. And the other thing that's changing now between units assigned to what's currently assigned, it's a very, very fewer -- there's fewer categories. So, this is a little bit more detailed. But the other thing is that a good number of these commercial properties in schools are based on assessed value currently, which really does not reflect anything about the benefit for use, for your sewer or your water system. So, there's several changes going on at once, so it's really hard to compare what this current schedule sets up versus what someone was paying before. So, there's going to be some changes and I'm able on the model to go look at that. And that's that next page.
And the schools, you base it on the number of students, not the number of people who are in the building, per se?
Students is what they keep track of on what's available. And we could change that if you have that information or if that, you know, it's basically what the realm is. It doesn't need to be detailed. And you know it's going to change every year, you know?
I think talking about staff.
That's a good point, yeah.
Exactly. And you could add in for that as well.
Large staff administrators.
Yeah.
That could be 150 right there.
Pretty soon, there'll be more administrators than students.
Yeah.
Well, it's because, like, I'm thinking, like, in middle school, they feed the entire district.
Yes.
And the other schools are not paying the water bill for that.
Okay.
And that's where the main kitchen is.
And there's ways to try to get to that if you really feel there's a bigger benefit or a difference and how to take those things into account. Some of these, and the majority of your accounts and your customers are basically are residential. There's a number of condos. There's still single-family. You know, it's still one per unit. There's some multiple families. They're not that hard to deal with. The hard thing is the ones that are the 483s, I think it is, is the converted residence.
And that's what you and I had.
Yeah, that's what I had you help with.
But until the tax assessor, right, changes.
Yeah.
The coding on that, we have to deliver.
Yeah. And you don't really need to change it because that's what it's coded as for the tax assessor. It's a converted residence. But it doesn't tell you anything about what the use is, where if you're coded as a car wash, you're a car wash. A number of the other things that are here in the Village are multi-use road type and converted residence. There are 480s, 482, and 483s.
What are those?
Multi-use is usually like the single building deals where there's a barber shop, a clothing place, and maybe something else.
Like 16 East Main Street. They have, like, four different stores on the bottom and, like, six apartments above.
Yes. Uh-huh. And converted residences are mostly those homes that have -- they usually have a residence up top and maybe a lawyer's office downstairs or some such. The problem that we had, and the mayor helped, because I don't live here, he helped verify what some of these were. So, when I'm going through the accounts, a 210, single-family home, 1111. Then you get to the 483s, 482s, and 484s. I don't know what's happening on that property. And if that multi-use facility has a hair salon or restaurant, then a whatever, they're getting a lot more benefit than the lawyer's office and the clothing store. So, you want to try to keep track of that. And that would be something as you go to implementation of something like this, it's important to verify when the account is set up, what's the property code, what's the actual use. The other thing that I didn't have when I did this was there are a few accounts, I think there's about a dozen, two dozen, that are only water and not sewer. So, they would get points for water and not get, you know, they would have units assigned for their water account and not for their sewer account. And those are the little details that need to be kept straight when you're setting this up.
On the other side of?
Because of list stations?
No. Like Cardinal Drive, right, is wells.
So, are they on wells? So, they have private water but community sewer?
Sometimes it's water except.
Yeah.
Right? It's well accepted.
Yeah, it's all about the septuagons.
Okay, so I don't know why.
Well, according to, you know, the accounts that I got, there were more accounts for sewer than there were, I mean, more accounts for water than there were for sewer. So, there may be some folks that are getting community water that have something or...
What about a wine company? Do you have that on there?
That's, you know, and that's the single issue here is that's the only manufacturer you have, really. It's marked as an industry, 710, 712, 710.
Well, they also have industry on Halle Drive.
Yeah.
Berota Realty should be.
That's an industry?
Yeah.
And that's probably a lot of water.
Yeah.
I don't know if he uses that. I don't know. I don't know his process.
Okay.
All right, and those are some of the details that need to be, you know, as you're setting this up, need to be verified. Yeah. They manufacture some, a product?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, chemicals and...
Oh, I think I did see that.
Yeah, food additives and stuff like that.
It might not be listed as a 710. So, I'd have to go back and look at that, but, you know, some of these things I can verify. So, basically, that's the idea behind this, is that you try to put a scale on the benefit of water and sewer, and that's for facility charges. Both the rents and facility charges get calculated, you know, separately for water and for sewer. So, it's basically the same thing, and I have it here. I think I put it up here. Oh, oh, right here, too. I wanted to show this. So, currently, your facility charge is $15 per unit quarterly, right?
Yes.
I didn't charge, I didn't put the annuals together. I wanted to do that. Oh, well. So, with your existing units, if you divide this current budget together for the debt, separate it according to the water budget and the sewer debt service and the water-sewer separate, using the same units that are assigned now, your water would be $45. Oh, that is a year. Okay, good. Okay. The two middle columns are annual charge. Annual for water, one unit, one single-family home, would be $45.62, and sewer would be Putting together the new units with this schedule, water's 43, so a little bit less, and sewer is 22.97 per unit. That's just how much one unit is charged. So, if you've got a recreation and sports facility kind of thing here gets four units, so they would get four times that amount, but this is just comparing the base rate, your one-per-unit rate. Adding the new sewer debt service that's starting next year, sewer is going to go up quite a bit. It's going to be annually $121.39 per unit for sewer service.
That will take care of all that?
That covers the debt service, yeah.
Debt service next year is scheduled $200,000. The following is jumps up to 300, I think it says.
This was calculated on the 300,000, simply just to keep it simple. And when we actually do the new budget, when you actually get your new operation and maintenance budget and, you know, your final budget for 2022, we can go back and recalculate this. So, this might be a little bit higher than you would see.
Okay, so that's per unit?
Yeah, per unit. So, single-family homes are, that's the annual charge, is $121 for debt service for sewer and 43 for water. And anybody else, like commercials that are larger, restaurants and fast food are larger than that. Hospitals and health services have more units assigned, so they're going to be paying more than that. Basically, these are written on single-family homes because that's who you want to make sure, you know, can your people afford it? You know, how does this system work for your people? And the biggest thing I said with the model is looking at changes from what people paid according to the in-place system now into adding this. You're both separating budgets. You're changing from assessed value to benefit, and it's really hard to compare those apples to oranges, but this at least is looking at some sort of a comparison. So, changing to the new schedule isn't a really large increase.
Can you explain to me, because that's what I'm trying to figure out, how to figure out what a single-family's home, and the minimum is 7,000 gallons, how would I calculate that with that?
For this, you don't. The benefit for the debt service, your benefit is a single-family home. You get one unit. Doesn't matter what you use for debt service.
Okay, so that's 30, 35 a quarter. Give or take.
For here.
Yeah, 121 divided by 4.
Yeah, yeah.
And then what is the rate for the water? The same, the old rate? Or is it?
This is the same thing.
It's on the page before. It's on the page before. She had the new rates, right there, that chart. That's the new rates.
Went down.
And that's based on that debt.
And this is 2021, that's why I was asking.
Right. This is, that's what we're comparing because I don't have a 2022 budget. So, the point is that this system works for your 2021 budget. It should work for your 2022, but I don't know what that is yet.
So, I don't know how I, I don't feel like I know what our bills are going to be, okay?
Our water bill.
Right. I mean, I know what our debt's going to be. Our debt's going to go from $15 to $30.
Right.
But what about our water bill? So, somebody who's paying, who's got 7,000, 15,000, 25,000, 30,000 gallons a month, how are we calculating that? How are we going to let people know?
You go by the budget. When the budget comes up, when you've adopted your budget, you do this calculation. This is how much water was billed in '21. Take the 2022 budget and divide that. What's the operation and maintenance budget? Is your, do you think your operation and maintenance budget is going to change a lot?
Our water bills have not changed for 20 years at least.
I'm not worrying about the, I'm not starting with the bills.
No, I think so.
On your budget. So, on this page four, you've got the operation and maintenance budget for water. Is that going to change a lot in the coming year? It might?
It's going to go up a little bit because supplies are...
Yeah.
Are contracted with the subcontractors will go up. Not much.
Yeah. But budgets change. They fluctuate a little every year.
But, you know, the system is getting older.
Yeah.
You know, and we have new waste water plant, but everything leading to there is a problem.
Right.
So, we do have to have...
And that's a separate recommendation in the report is to have a capital improvement fund.
Right.
For water and one for sewer.
Right.
Where you'd have to make some estimate on what you're going to need for, like, for the water system, a water main break gives at least $1,500 a break. How many breaks do you get every year? You know, get some kind of an estimate on...
How many breaks do we get a year?
Too many. Well, and you would want to take your past experience on your system and say, "How many breaks do you get on a year on an average?" And you want to be able to build up that fund. So, then that would be a charge that would be added to your debt service budget.
So, it's your...
That's your capital improvement budget, and that gets divided by the units. It's, you know, kept together.
Our budgets get adopted February.
Okay.
For the next fiscal year. Fiscal year goes March to February.
Right.
So, is it your recommendation that we keep everything the way it is now? The billing, the fourth quarter still has not happened yet?
Yeah. You would probably want to start this with your next fiscal year.
Okay. So, I think that's answers the question that I had, and that was brought up to me today. That's fine. I mean, I don't want anything to go on. I have to pay. If it goes up a dime, I got to pay a dime. I don't want, I don't want to pay that. We do have to pay for our facilities.
You've also put a lot of money into your facilities and it's got value and it needs to be maintained, which means you have to have a good operation and maintenance budget. What are your expenses going to be? And this is the way to get your revenue.
I got word today that one of our well modings has died. We happen to have one.
Right, but you want to have another one in case. Right. So, those are the... So, those, those are the kinds of things to think about for getting a budget for capital improvement. And then on which page was it? Or? I can't drive.
So, really getting back to what Jimmy is, is?
It's right here.
So, we're going to have to base our next water and sewer on what you're giving us right now.
You don't have to. Basically, what you want to be saying to folks is this is how we're doing it in the future. And because you don't expect your budgets for operation and maintenance to change all that much, look at how much water was billed in 2021 and divide your new budget by how much water was billed and you come up with the cost per kilogallon. Because you're probably not going to be seeing too many changes, you're going to go up a little bit on your operation and maintenance budget. When you divide that by how much water was used, you're not going to get anything per kilogallon that's really all that different. You know, it's going to be a different number, but it shouldn't change too much from this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think our consumption will go up that much. Water consumption, it's going to go up a little bit.
But you're looking at the whole year and not seasonally. So, that?
No, no. I'm thinking about what's been given permits.
Right. You haven't had too many new connections.
No.
Okay. So, if you're not, if your budget for operation and maintenance is not changing all that much, you don't have anything, you know, new coming in, basically, you're just continuing, and your water billed is pretty much the same, this number for the use rent for water and for sewer is not going to change all that much. You're going to have some changes. So, when this is presented as a public hearing, basically what you're saying is this is our new system. It's transparent. We can tell you why. We can tell you what. We can tell you how. It's fair. This is how our new consumption rates are going to be calculated. And this is probably similar to what we're going to be seeing for the year coming. But we'll have that actual rate when the budget is finalized because that's what your cost is based on, is your budget and your use. The big thing with the debt service for the sewer is that new debt service charge that's coming due in 2022. Does that answer the question of?
I don't get it at all.
Okay.
Let me, let me just ask you this.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm pretty good with numbers. I can't figure out why I can't figure this out. If we had implemented today, okay, for 7,000 gallon usage,
Yeah.
it would be 2642 plus the 3905. Plus, not the $15, but on the next page, the 20?
You want to go back to the next page?
The 24, 24, or the 4562, or a combination of the both?
Okay. We want to go with the new, the new units. Basically, the existing units is the number of units assigned per account that you're currently using.